The November 18, 2019 meeting in the Anaronda County Council is now in session. We'd ask that you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, Councilwoman Lacy will lead us in the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ask that everyone just take a moment to silently reflect on the values which brought us here today. That was not silent, but thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. We're going to have Boy Scout troops 884-192 and 721 come forward for the Pledge of Allegiance. And you guys could turn around this way, and then whenever you're ready to start, the flag's this way. Yep. Whenever you're ready.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. Love you United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We want to thank the scouts for coming out this evening. I hope you find it enjoyable as the rest of us up here. I do want to take a moment. Councilwoman Hare would like to make a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to take actually one additional moment of silence for a student at Central Special who lost her life last week, or earlier this week. So if everyone could just reflect on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one additional announcement. We'd like to announce a new addition to my staff. Legislative aide Brian Kimmet. If you'd please stand, we'd like to welcome him. He's my new legislative aide. Thank you. We can clap for him. Let's give him a round of applause. We haven't released his cellphone number yet, so that, you know, he'll get the applause later on. But thank you, Brian. Welcome to the team. All right, we will go forward.
Oh, may I make a quick little announcement?
Councilwoman Robyn, yes.
I just wanted to recognize our chairman, Mr. Andrew Pruski, representing District Four, who is serving his last evening as the chair this evening, or for this term of his, this term as chair. And it takes a lot of work and a lot of concentration with these long meetings. And so I just want to say thank you for your service to the council.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now that everyone's agreed this is going to be a short meeting, we'll move into it. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. We'll now have an invite to members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks be limited to two minutes. I do not have a sign-in sheet for this evening. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward for invitation to the audience? As you're coming forward, we're going to have your name and address in two minutes. Madam Secretary has a sheet that she'll have you sign on. And Ms. Johnson, we'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I am happy to see the scouts here. It's really wonderful. It's also nice to notice that there are females included in the Boy Scouts, which is really important. The Boy Scouts needed the money from the cookies, is the rumor that I heard. But, because the Girl Scouts know how to fundraise. But, you know, at any rate. One of the things that I've talked about in the past, that there are people who advocate that in addition to doing the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of the meeting, we also ought to recite the preamble to the Constitution to remind all of us why we're here. You know, it's "we," the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, in order to establish justice, et cetera. I would go farther, but I have an additional thing I wanted to mention. The last time I spoke to you, I talked to you about the book called The Chesapeake Bay Blues by Howard Ernst, in which he was evaluating the effectiveness of a certain legislation to protect the environment. And that the voters have expressed their frustration and their sense of betrayal because the actual enforcement of those statutes has failed. The bay is in trouble, you know. We've got five square miles of the Severn River that's a dead zone, et cetera. So, and it's an example of that. Today, as I was, you know, heading into town, here are my neighbors. They, you know, they have, electrical utility has a contract with the tree service. These guys were doing the normal job of, quote, clearing the lines. But in 2015, this property had had a major tree removal, which included some substantial pruning, which everybody believed was going to cause their death.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, so today they were chipping up the dead trees, which they then proceeded to spread the chips on the property, which is filling without a permit.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Thank you. My name is Matt Minahan. I'm president of the Neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula, and pleased to be here. I'm speaking on behalf of Bill 6819.
Sir, this is invitation to the audience, and you can't cover the bill. Okay.
I can speak when the bill comes in. Ah, okay, fine.
Yeah, if you would just wait, we're going to have that opportunity. We'll bring you up at that time.
I'll come back then. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Last call for invitation to the audience. Seeing no movement in the audience, the invitation to the audience now close. Is there any other item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing no movement, none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of November 4, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Hare, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout troop 957 Glen Burney.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 4, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of November 4, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 8419, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart. Bill Number 8519, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service. Bill Number 8619, An Ordnance Concerning Public Ethics Conflict of Interest. Bill Number 8719, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses, Multiple Dwellings, and Rooming Houses. Bill Number 8819, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Use or Occupancy Tax, Tr transient Lodging, Short-Term Rentals. Bill Number 8919, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Zoning, Short-Term Residential Rentals. Bill Number 9019, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Utilities, Partial Differral of Residential Waste Water System Connection Charges and Assessments.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 4919, Resolution Approving Nominations of Members to the Anaronda County Human Relations Commission. Resolution Number 5019, Resolution Confirming a Nomination of the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 4919 first this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 4919 first is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4919.
Resolution Number 4919, Resolution Approving Nominations of Members to the Anaronda County Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, administration. Ms. Schultz?
Great, thank you. Good evening. Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Christine Needer from the Office of Law. First of all, I would like to thank you all for your diligent, hard work in finding such great candidates to serve on the Human Relations Commission, many of whom are here tonight. Resolution 4919 approves the nominations of all 11 members to the HRC. The following nominees will serve an initial one-year term. Mary Dedony, Eugene Peterson, Walid Said, and Tony Strong Pratt. The following nominees will serve an initial two-year term. Georgia Noon Sherad, Roberto Veloso, Pastor John Watts, and Mohan Grover. The following nominees will serve initial three-year terms. Mark Apter, Tosin Agbula, and Fay Gaskin. All of you, you all have selected seven of the 11 qualified nominees, and you should have all of their resumes in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4919. I'm sorry, Ms.?
I believe it's 4519. No.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Oh, okay. Just to make sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll do that one tonight later.
That's coming up.
Resolution Number 4919, Resolution Approving Nominations of Members to the Anaronda County Human Relations Commission.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4919.
Ms. Lacy?
I'm very pleased to vote aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 4919 is adopted.
Congratulations to the appointees and the folks that are here this evening. We appreciate you coming out. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6819 as amended.
Bill Number 6819, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Forest Conservation.
Okay, as the administration's coming forward, we ask if they want to make any final discussions. I know we do have some amendments, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Trombauer with the County Exec's Office. To my left is Matt from our Environmental Policy Shop. We've got Eric Michelson from DPW. We've got Steve Kizegler, the Planning and Zoning Officer. We've got Lori Rhodes, our deputy planning and zoning officer? No, you're...
Assistant.
Assistant, Planning and Zoning Officer. And finally, we've got Kinley from Office of Law to answer all your legal questions. Council, you did such a great job voting unanimously for the last piece. We'd ask you to continue that track record with this bill. We believe it's ready for final passage. We'd urge your strong support. We have discussed this under a number of hours in a number of meetings, but because we are asking for you to vote the bill tonight, I did want to just recap some of the major things that we believe this bill will accomplish. It firstly increases the conservation thresholds that determine how much forest must be preserved on a construction site. It adds protections for contiguous forests of 75 acres or more. It doubles tree replanting requirements. It triples the fee in lieu amounts. And it brings the county into compliance with the most recent state code. So we have been through a lot with you on this bill. We appreciate the work that the council has done, and we believe it is ready to take the next step and become law. With that, our panel will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, seeing no lights, we're going to go right into the public hearing since the bill's been amended. We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks be limited to two minutes. We do have folks who are signed up, so we're going to ask them to come forward first, and then we'll open it up to anyone who did not sign up. But let's go to the list, and it's less than six, so all of you can come forward. Mr. Minahan, who was just up here a second ago, David Plot, Kim Kobly, and Allison Prost, if you would all come forward, please. So, Mr. Minahan, now you have the mic. Name, address, two minutes.
Thank you. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland, and president of the Neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula. Our mission as an organization is to find the right balance among development, the environment, and quality of life. And there's always a tension between the three. We are strongly in support of 6819 as it stands now. We would have strongly preferred the earlier version of the bill that was not as heavily amended as this one is. We're regretting that the greenways thresholds have been changed, and the protections for greenways have been undermined in this bill. That lot size thresholds have changed, that the fees in lieu have changed. We think these are changes in the wrong direction. However, we are strongly in support of this bill as it is now, and we're hoping that the administration comes back next year to address the problems with the greenways portion of this bill. We have one other issue we'd like to name here, and are very much appreciating Councilwoman Hare's support on this, and that is the problem of concentrating more development in the priority funding areas. Priority funding areas on peninsulas are areas where this bill would allow more development. And as we've spoken, I think, with all of you via the Peninsula Principles and the 200 community associations that have signed on to the Peninsula Principles. Forests are the most important way to protect the peninsulas, the waterways, and the bays. And so we're hoping that the next generation of this bill can correct the problem that lowers the threshold of development and lowers the threshold for forest protection in priority funding areas. Thanks to Mrs. Hare, and we appreciate your support from all of you. We ask that this bill be passed as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Plot.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, David Plot. I'm an attorney, line is in Blocker in Annapolis. Live in Burnwood Court in Annapolis. Testifying on a specific issue with respect to the bill, that there's a problem with the grandfathering language that I think could be fairly readily corrected with an amendment. I think it would implement the intent, what the council's trying to do. It relates to, if you look on page four, it's actually in lines 12 through 29 of the bill that deal with grandfathering. And if you look at lines 28 and 29, that relates to special exception applications. Okay? So you want, apparently the intent, I think the intent is to grandfather. If you've applied for a special exception, you would be grandfathered all the way through the process. It would make no sense to be grandfathered just for your special exception, but then when you go in for plans and subsequent approvals, that you are not grandfathered. But the way the bill is structured right now, only lines 28 and 29 reference applications for a special exception. So I have a client who has applied, they actually have been granted a special exception, but they have not yet submitted their preliminary plan application. So I don't believe under the current language that they would be grandfathered, and I think the intent was to grandfather people that deep into the process. That could be very readily corrected so that you show that not only is a special exception application grandfathered, but all subsequent permits and plans associated with that application. The only other problem I see with the bill in terms of the grandfathering is lines 24 through 26. That refers to revisions that do not materially alter the proposed or actual limits of disturbance. Great, but it only applies to one and two. One, rememuneral one being plan submittals, and rememuneral two being applications for building and grading permits. Okay, so that also doesn't apply to changes to the special exception plan. So I think you could pretty readily correct that to be clear that special exceptions are grandfathered from, once they've been applied for, through the process to when they get the permits that are approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Plot. Ms. Kobly?
Good evening. My name's Kim Kobly. My address is 1412 Harmony Lane, Annapolis, Maryland. And I'm the Maryland Executive Director for the League of Conservation Voters. And it's with a great honor that I stand here to, or I sit here to, thank you. It's not often that we get to applaud champions for forests and conservation, and that's what we're here to do tonight. And we urge strong support for passage of the bill as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prost? Okay, this panel is dismissed. Anyone who did not sign up may come forward at this time. Madam Secretary, we'll have a sign-in sheet as you come forward. We have six chairs up here, so if you're going to come forward, let's try and fill them in. There's another one down on the end here. Ms. Johnson, if you'd like to begin, we'll start with you, and then work our way across.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I also want to thank everyone for working hard on this bill, but you also know that I'm really committed to preserving the forests. It's not a tree, it's not two trees. It is all of the creatures that live and inhabit a forest that makes it so critically important. The critical area is called the critical area because those provide the nursery grounds for so many species, particularly, you know, as far as the waters of our county are concerned. You know, the creatures that grow into adult fish, crabs, oysters, and so forth. But I would also like to say to the scouts who are here that it's really important for you all to understand that this bill has a dramatic impact on you. Whatever these people decide to vote on, it takes 50 years to replace a mature tree. You chop it down today, you can plant 22 saplings, and that, those 22 saplings are not going to be able to do the job of one mature tree. Your planet is in jeopardy, and I hope that you're keeping watch on these folks, that you're watching the legislation so that you encourage these people to tighten up the requirements, you tighten up enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Spader?
Good evening. My name is Paul Spader. I'm president of the Magathie River Association. And I am here tonight to echo the approval and congratulate the members of the board for working on this bill. It's been a long slug. There's been some give and take, and that's the process. The Magathie River Association and the communities within the Magathie River urge you to pass this bill as it's been amended. I don't believe we can do better than what we already have. I think the real reason to do this, and the underlying reason, is the most important thing to think about this is what you want is the continuous forest belt. That's so important because the Magathie River Association's been around since 1946, and we're one of the few, or the starting age groups that actually measures the health of the river. And I can honestly say that the river really depends on these forested areas, and we measure a lot of mistakes that happen day to day through development. But this bill is a step in the right direction, and I applaud all the efforts that have gone into this, and that whatever other issues might come up, we can work at those out as we move forward. And there are many other things to deal with this council that will help the environment and the river. So I urge you to vote it tonight and move on and do the other work of the county that needs to be done. Thank you.
Hi, Britt Griswold, 823 Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland. I too would urge you to vote final passage tonight. If some of these amendments I see come up, I would urge you to in fact tighten the grandfathering and not loosen it more. And I'm concerned about Amendment 40. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know, but it's giving a definition of contiguous forest is 100 acres, yet inside the bill you have a 75-acre contiguous forest definition for protection. So I don't see why you couldn't make the definition of contiguous forest 50 acres, and you can still protect it at 75 with the content of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Eric Fisher with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. Allison sends her regret she wasn't able to make it in time for her name to be called. But I will pass along our appreciation for your hard work over the past few months. I think you all should get honorary degrees in planning. And I have a degree in planning. So I think the bill at this point is very well balanced. I think the effectiveness of the bill depends on all of these different parts working together. And with that said, I would say, in terms of additional amendments, please be very careful about upsetting that balance at this point. I think we're in, I think we're in good shape. I will also say that we think it'll be very effective. We think that this bill on a typical development project could reduce the forest loss by half or more. That's going to make a significant difference for the future of this county and its environment and its waterways. So we appreciate that. It also means the job isn't done. You all have a general development plan coming before you soon, and that will be another important part of the conversation in determining the future of our forests and our waterways. That combined with any incentives that can be put in place to encourage tree and forest preservation will be part of the larger package. But thank you for working so hard on this piece, and we encourage you to pass the bill in its current form.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Lisa Bender, 712 Shore Road, Savannah Park, Maryland. And I just wanted to say thank you for having the courage and the foresight, to all of you, to stand up and support the lands, the waters, the trees, and the peoples of Anaronda County for the now and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Tim Martin, Principal Bangeteering, 2661 Reva Road. I just wanted to reiterate Mr. Plot's concerns regarding the grandfathering. A literal read of it would, you could make the interpretation that the application for a sketch plan would be grandfathered, but the subsequent submittal of a final development plan, which is after the sketch plan approval, you may be able to make an interpretation that's not, that's not grandfathered. I think the intent is for a sketch plan as grandfathered to follow through the process. There's a lot of work done on the sketch plan, and a lot of elements are on there, and that would carry into the final development plan. So I just wanted to make sure that I clearly stated that, to make sure that that's the intent of the bill. If not, I think a lot of the hard work we did to get to where we are would be lost regarding grandfathering. And I do agree with Mr. Plot's testimony, I'm not going to repeat everything, in regards to special exception criteria. Thank you for all your hard work as well.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward to speak on 6819 as amended? This is the last call. Once again, one more call. Okay. You have the floor, sir. Name, address, two minutes.
Sure. Kevin Haynes, 303 Sycamore Road. Tonight, I will not talk about data, I promise. So I am here to talk about contiguous forests and a need for a contiguous forest definition within this law. The law as currently written specifies that contiguous forest, which is a priority retention area, which would require modification under this law, is defined as the following. Contiguous forest that connects the largest undeveloped or most vegetated tracts of land within or adjacent to a site. So if I were to have a one-acre site filled with forest, and I were to touch a square foot of that, that technically could be a contiguous forest and therefore would require modification. A modification is not a simple solution to what maybe should be a simple, you know, problem. So I would prefer and encourage you to look at the State Forest Conservation Manual, which defines contiguous forest as forest of at least 100 acres area or 300 feet in wide that connects to areas 100 acres or more adjacent to a site. It was brought up that there's already a definition of contiguous forest that's 75 acres. I'd point out that that definition requires other qualifiers that may not be captured. You could technically have a forest that would not meet the FIDS definition of forest, but would meet this contiguous forest definition. So I would highly encourage you to look into the contiguous forest definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 6819 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Bill Number 6819 as amended?
Bill Number 6819, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Forest Conservation.
Okay, any initial discussion for amendments? Okay. Amendment Number 40. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 40.
Amendment Number 40, this amendment adds a definition of contiguous forest.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is Councilman Volkey's amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment corrects what Mr. Haynes actually was just up here speaking about. This does insert a definition, as everybody knows, that's kind of my calling card. I think it's important that we have definitions that are in these bills. Otherwise, we give away a lot of our legislative prerogative to other entities to interpret what the bill means. This definition, excuse me, as Mr. Haynes said, does come out of the state's Forest Conservation Technical Manual, Third Edition, 1997, as published by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. And it is on two places in there where it talks about contiguous forests, page 46 and page 116. page 116. Page 46 is where it talks in that Forest Conservation Manual about how to identify priority forest areas, and page 116 is within the glossary of terms where it indicates the contiguous forest definition. So with that, I would ask my colleagues, we do have another meeting where we can vote on this. There is no need that we have to do this tonight, and I would suggest that we take the time to get this right so that we don't have to come back again in the future and fix some of these issues. So hopefully, you all can support this amendment to the bill. Thank you.
Administration response to Amendment number 40.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Tremeyer for the County Exec's Office. We'd urge the council to resist this amendment. We believe it's unnecessary and, and potentially even confusing, but I believe Office of Law can speak to the more, more details about that.
Thank you. Ken Lee Bray, Office of Law, for the record. It's the administration's position that this is superfluous at best. The contiguous forest definition in the technical manual is, exists. The Comar makes reference to it. The Natural Resources Article and our Article 17 do not define contiguous forest. That is true. But there are only a couple of instances in the bill that bring up contiguous forests, and to add this definition, I think confuses the concept of the largest undeveloped or most vegetated tracts, which are defined in, as existing in the Forest Conservation Plan in 176303, with the concept of forest, contiguous forest areas in the technical manual. So I think it's our position that this isn't necessary and has the potential to confuse the interpretation of, and the application of the amended forest conservation law in Ananor County.
Councilman Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bray, good evening. So with respect to the comments that you, the position that you just took, they weren't comments, it was a position. With respect to that, so you mentioned the interpretation issue. Who is it that would actually interpret what is a contiguous forest absent this amendment?
The Planning and Zoning Officer.
Okay. So if we, as the legislative body for this county, elect not to define this term, then we are putting that power into the hands of someone who is not elected by the voters of this county, who will decide what that term means. Is that right?
That would be correct. The Planning and Zoning Officer has the authority to interpret these particular provisions of the code.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you. So given the comments we just heard about a 1-acre forested tract, what is the outcome in that instance? Mr. Kai Ziegler, maybe you can tell me. I mean, how do you interpret that with the bill as is?
I'm not sure I can actually answer that. One of the difficulties in when we run these scenarios, how does one thing affect another, affect another, until you have an actual development application and work through the worksheets, understand what's on the property, what other things may have been done in the past on the property? I really try and avoid going into the what-ifs. So I don't think I'll be able to answer that sitting here.
So if I tell you I have a 1-acre parcel that's forested, and I want to improve one square foot of it, I believe was Mr. Haynes' testimony, is that disturbing contiguous forest that would require a modification under your leadership, or is that?
What I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not trying to be evasive. I really try hard not to try and deal with these what-ifs, because when you actually get into an application, there are many factors that come into play into how, what the outcome would be.
I hear you, but we're up here trying to decide whether or not to vote for an amendment or whether or not the interpretation would be left to the Planning and Zoning Officer based on our sort of legislative history. So I'm trying to understand for my vote what that interpretation from a logical standpoint might be from you as the Planning and Zoning Officer, or what you think it might be sort of the most easily understood application of it.
And I understand your question, and this is the difficulty of trying to do the what-ifs, what-ifs, the, the future analysis. Can you, can you repeat the question?
Sure. And, and again, I'm asking only because if we don't pass the amendment, surely this is going to be a what-if that will become a reality at some point. You will have to make an interpretation under this for a variety of different circumstances. So I believe Mr. Haynes' testimony was if he had a 1-acre parcel that was forested, and he wanted to disturb one square foot of it, would that 1-acre parcel, would that be, would that fall under this contiguous forest definition, or how would you interpret that for a 1-acre parcel?
Well, on any application, I believe we all understand now that you can disturb 20,000 square feet and be exempt from the bill.
Okay. So anything under the 20,000 square feet, it's not going to be contiguous forest anyways? Okay. And if we're at 20,001 square feet, I suppose then, does that change it?
Well, what we would be doing is working with the applicant to find a way where we're not 20,001 square feet. And that's, that is what happens in the real world.
Okay. So roughly that half an acre is the, is the determination. Anything above that you agree would be considered contiguous forest under the bill? And you'd be trying to work with, with the developer or with the homeowner?
I think we try and work with everyone. And, and again, we're getting into the next stage of detail on the question of what-if, 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 and it gets really difficult, because when we actually deal with these situations, it isn't done this way. There's worksheets that are filled out, there are, there is a whole host of information that needs to be provided to get at the simple answer.
But one of the things you have to evaluate is a contiguous for, is whether or not there's a contiguous forest that would require a modification. Is that accurate?
Not sure if I understand the question.
One of the things that you would be evaluating in a forest conservation plan is whether or not there is contiguous forest being disturbed that you would need a modification for. I'm on page seven of the bill, line 44. If that's an evaluation you have to make, you have to make it regardless of all of the other items that are in the bill. So I'm just trying to understand, if we leave this interpretation up to you, how you see it, or if we tell you what our, what our sort of legislative intent was with it, how do you, how do you handle that?
Well, I think if, you know, understanding the legislative intent is, is obviously pretty important. And we try to take that into account when we do our work. We'll have probably a discussion on another item in a moment that is important. And I try and be very respectful if I understand the intent of the legislation. And now what we might do is, if we get stuck, and my guess is in the future, there's going to be a variety of things with this bill or any other bill that has gotten this complicated, is we're going to get stuck, and we're going to ask for assistance from the county lawyer's law office, and we'll work through as best we can, which is what we do with every application as it stands today. We're asking for future interpretations now. It is, it is somewhat difficult in certain areas. But what I would get at, I think, to the, the question we had earlier, is that someone proposing to clear 20,000 square feet or less is exempt. And that's the answer to the issue.
In that particular instance, yes, I do, I hear that.
It's not one square foot, it's 20,000 square feet, yeah.
Is it possible, when you get stuck, so to speak, that you might look to this DNR guidance as a definition for contiguous forest if you can't find it in our bill?
That's possible.
Is that something you can commit to?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I thought I saw another light by Mr. Johnson or Mr. Vogel. I wasn't sure.
Actually, Councilwoman Hare said exactly what I was going to say, that the companion document to this is the DNR Forest Conservation Technical Manual.
And is that something the admin stands by as well, in terms of putting that in partnership with contiguous forest or another definition that's not defined in here?
Absolutely. It's the companion document that also the development community uses. No county's code defines absolutely everything in its forest conservation ordinance. The document is much longer than an ordinance, and it governs a lot of what happens.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Johnson reads it at night before he goes to sleep. The administration stands behind it.
Councilman Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to be clear then, that I understand this. You all are saying that this amendment is unnecessary, because you are going to go and look at this 1997 Forest Conservation Manual, and you're basically going to reach this same exact interpretation in every situation. So we don't need this, because you already know exactly what we want to do. Is that my understanding?
I think you're making it very clear tonight.
Okay. Because I'm just going to say this, you know, I lived my whole life in this county. I grew up here as a kid. I can say that. And I will tell you that one of the things that I always used to hear as a kid was, you could get anything done in this county if you knew the right people. That was the impression that everybody had, you know, growing up. There was this sense that you knew the right folks, you got it done. You didn't know the right folks, you didn't get it done. That people were treated differently based on how much money they had, or based on what area they lived in, or who represented them. And so one of the issues that I have when I come to this body is I bring that experience with me. And one of the things that's amazing about something like this is that it puts it black and white, right in front of everybody. No interpretation. It doesn't matter who sits in the seat of the Planning and Zoning Officer. It doesn't matter if that guy's my friend, or if I knew him way back when, or if I have, you know, a good Planning and Zoning Officer now and a bad one later. This is the law, and just straight up like that, which is what floors me when the administration comes in repeatedly, when I try to put in things like these definitional amendments and say, let's make the law really clear for the people of our county so that they can understand exactly what rules they're going to be governed by. And I continue to hear this sense of, it's superfluous, it's unnecessary, we don't need it in our code. And I just don't get that. Because for me, one of the things that I try to bring to this position is that idea of, let's make the law the same for everybody. Let's make it fair across the board. Let's make it so that anybody can pick up the code, read through it, and understand exactly what's going on. Let's not invest so much power in one position, the Office of Planning and Zoning Officer, which, I don't say this with any aspersions to you, Mr. Kai Ziegler, because you just got here. But there have been many Planning and Zoning Officers who have been accused of running their department as a fiefdom. You know, you are now, for the county executive, his second Planning and Zoning Officer. And I hope that you stick around. I think you will. But if you don't, and somebody else sits in that seat, this now is what you told us. But if you're not there anymore, I can't guarantee that that's what's going to happen. So the idea for me, that we're going to just sit there and leave all this authority to somebody who, at the moment, is in the position, seems foolish and seems like a complete disservice to the citizens of this county. And it seems to get exactly back to the point that I ran for this position to avoid, which is, everybody gets treated the same, as opposed to, well, I know somebody, so I'm in that position, I got a little different treatment, because it's discretionary. Because that discretionary situation is what leads to disparate outcomes. And frankly, I think all of us up here are trying to avoid disparate outcomes.
Administration or anybody else? I do just want to follow, because this was brought up earlier by someone testifying. This does change the, there was amendment passed at the last meeting where it was 75 acres for continued forest, but now this is 100. Am I correct in stating that? I just want to be clear.
This, this amendment defines contiguous forests of areas of at least 100 acres or forest areas that are 300 feet wide. In the previous amendment at the last meeting, yeah, we, we set up a requirement for something different.
Gotcha. Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number 40.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Vogel?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodman?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
I'm just going to take one second quickly. I think the amendment that Mr. Chairman was talking about with last meeting had to do with the FIDS and the habitat at 75 acres, not necessarily defining contiguous forest. So I think the two are separate, and both can be in the bill. I agree with Mr. Vogel that it is important to define what we are looking at for future, future Planning and Zoning Officers. I, I trust that Mr. Kai Ziegler will look to the DNR handbook in this particular instance and, and arrive at the same intent anyways. But I do agree that sort of for future generations, it is important to make it clear, so I will vote aye.
Ms. Pruski?
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment number 40 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number 41.
Amendment number 41. This amendment prohibits the application of the new requirements contained in Bill 6819 to all applications associated with an application for special exception submitted prior to December 15th, 2019.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similarly, this was an item that was addressed by Mr. Plott, is, as I understood it, the intention of the council that if someone, an applicant, is coming in and is asking for some sort of a development application, that all parts of that will be grandfathered and will be part of the, the December 15th prior deadline. So this clarifies that, based on some advice that was provided by the Office of Law, indicating that special exceptions would not be part of this application process, that if one applies for a special exception, that wouldn't necessarily then translate into the next step, which is the sketch plan and the preliminary plans and moving forward with the, the total application. So the intention with this, I believe, is to clarify this and Amendment 42, which we're not to yet, but the two of them clarify that the application deadline, the grandfathering deadline, is to special exceptions as well.
Administration response?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The administration would urge the council to reject this amendment. We, we don't want to broaden the grandfathering any more than it already is. We believe the existing language is sufficient and represents a compromise towards what the administration originally introduced and what the council passed via amendment at a previous meeting. However, to speak to any of the specifics, I'll turn this over to Mr. Kai Ziegler or Ms. Rhodes, since they're professional planners and not me.
Thank you. Very quickly.
This is going to be a very similar discussion to what we just had, and part of it is, is understanding the council's legislative intent. I believe special exceptions were put in to the grandfathering section, because your perspective was that if you got your special exception application in prior to December 15th, that special exception and the follow-on development applications that may come as a result of it would be grandfathered under the old bill. And, and I would say that is our intent. I believe the administration is acceptable of that, and we would honor that, and I'm very willing to go onto the record to say that's how we will interpret and practice this portion of the, of the law.
Councilman Pickard?
Go ahead, Ms. Schuet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Schuet.
Just a clarification, to be sure I understand what you mean. If someone files an application for a special exception before the drop dead date in December and, and gets it.
Yes.
And then files an application for a preliminary plan or sketch plan or whatever it may be, that, that application for the sketch plan or preliminary plan would be grandfathered.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry. Councilwoman Pickard, then we'll work our way across.
At the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the very first public hearing, we had a discussion about grandfathering clauses. And Mr. Kai Ziegler, you actually mentioned that when we, as a county, adopt sweeping legislation like this, one of the most important things we do is adopt a strong grandfathering clause. This council amended the grandfathering clause originally submitted with a vote of, I think, six to one, with the intent of the way it is written now, that, like you just said, special exception and then all the documents and, and applications that would follow would be grandfathered. So I do not want to amend this bill again, but I want to know that our legislative intent is going to be honored.
I, I appreciate that, and that's, I think, why we're having this discussion in the public hearing. Again, when I read this language and I understand what your intent is, my objective is to administer this portion of the bill so that if someone came in with a special exception, an application sometime before December 15th, then, assuming it's approved, any follow-on development application, whether it's a preliminary plan, sketch plan, site development plan, building permit, or grading permit, will all be grandfathered. So the approval, this, the, the application of a special exception starts a, if you want to say, a chain reaction of the follow-on development techniques to also be grandfathered.
Thank you. Councilman Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bray, I'm going to direct my remarks to you, because as a fellow attorney, hopefully we can all walk through this together. Let's begin with this premise. If a law is clear, there is, intent is irrelevant. Am I right?
That's correct.
All right. So when a court or any body that is interpreting this law is looking at it, provided that they're able to read the plain language of the bill and understand it, the intention and whatever we say on this day is, is irrelevant to them.
That's correct. You would not look to legislative intent absent an ambiguity in the law.
Perfect. Now, if I look at page four of this bill, particularly Section 14, 1, 2, 3, and 4, the only thing that I see is that in four, an application for special exception filed on or before December 15th, 2019, will be grandfathered. That's what I'm seeing.
That's correct.
Okay. The question that I have is, where does it clearly state in this bill that if a special exception is filed, and then subsequently, the next part of that application, which is a sketch plan or a preliminary plan, where does it say that those two things tie together? Because on the plain language of this bill, I don't see that.
I hear what you're saying. I think what I've heard from the administration and from the Planning and Zoning Officer, who is going to administer this, is that he is, and is prepared to honor the, the special exception and, and any plan that flows from it under the old law. I, I understand what you're getting at, and I understand that there may be a question because forest conservation is not necessarily decided at the time of special exception application.
Right.
However, it was a clear intent, I believe, in the amendment that was offered, that this particular language address or provide applicants with a, who had made significant headway in preparing development applications in general, be, not be required to start over as a result of the new forest conservation law. So...
But you and I agree that the intent is irrelevant if the plain language is clear. And I guess my problem with where we are right now is that I think you're acknowledging exactly kind of what we're saying, which is that what this amendment is asking for, to simply clarify the intent that existed at the time. Because absent that, there's no nexus between the special exception and then tying to a sketch plan. And I guess I'm asking you this because Mr. Swain isn't here, but I know that he's been asked for this opinion, and the Office of Law's opinion at this point has been that there is not a nexus between the two, which, if on the plain language of the way the bill is written, the Office of Law is indicating there's no nexus, then it necessitates this amendment to create the nexus. Otherwise, on the plain language, absent a nexus, regardless of what Mr. Kaiszigler or the administration wants with respect to their intent, no legislative or interpretive, excuse me, no interpretative body or judicial body will ever get to the intent. They'll simply look at what's the plain language in front of them. So I think we keep getting this idea of, "Well, we all know what the intent is," but no one gets to intent if the plain language is clear. If I'm missing something, fill in for me.
No, I don't think you're missing anything. I'm not sure I agree with the use of your term "nexus"
Okay.
...in this context. However, the forest conservation requirements are not finally decided at the time of a special exception. A special exception plan may include a lot of detail about the development
Mm-hmm.
Or a little detail about the development.
Right.
And frankly, that's really up to the developer in what they include in an application. What I hear the administration saying is that they view this as a one-time laying out the parameters of development and being held to that development plan all the way through. However, I acknowledge what you're saying, that because, as I said, special exception is not the triggering action for forest conservation decisions, that there might be a question going forward. I really can't go any further than that.
If I could add to, the fact that the word, the phrase "special exceptions" included in the grandfathering section, again, let's keep in mind that we're not going to be dealing with Forest Conservation Act through the special exception. It's not the same type of development application as a preliminary plan or a building permit, it's different. But the fact that special exception is even mentioned in the grandfathering has to be so that the special exception and the follow-on development applications would also be grandfathered. Otherwise, there's no point in having special exception be grandfathered.
But if this clarifies exactly what the intent of the council was, and we all agree that this was the intent of the council, and this simply makes the law abundantly clear to everyone who reads it, I'm baffled at the reason for the objection to the amendment. That's where I'm sort of struggling with this, is that we're all agreeing this is the intent, we're all saying, "Well, if you read between the lines, you can get to this exact same place." Again, why are we leaving it up to discretion and sort of tying this, "Well, it has to be there, and if, because it's there, it would be an absurd result if we didn't read in that it meant something." I guess that's where I'm confused. I don't really understand why, if this just makes it clear, we don't want to pass the clearest law we can. So that's where I'm sort of left scratching my head.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think Mr. Kaiszigler and I agree on this one. To me, the fact that it exists in the grandfathering language at all means there is no ambiguity, it was there for a reason. It's clearly a trigger or a chain reaction at that point. So I'm also of the mind that we probably never get to legislative intent. Because if you don't enforce it the way Mr. Kaiszigler is suggesting, that all follow-on applications are then grandfathered in, then essentially, we have rendered Section 4 moot. And I think any legislative body, or, sorry, any judicial body that's interpreting that, you have to give credence to all of the words that are in the statute from the beginning. And I don't think there's any way to interpret this grandfathering clause other than what Mr. Kaiszigler is saying. So if it's abundantly clear on that front, we get there already. If there is an ambiguity and people come to different sort of understandings of it, then we do look to the legislative intent. And if I'm hearing Mr. Kaiszigler and the rest of the council, the legislative intent is that it be a chain reaction, so that if a special exception was filed on or before December 15, and then a sketch plan is filed December 17, that corresponds with that special exception, the sketch plan is also grandfathered. And if you're suggesting to me that that is how you see it as well, and that that's the way you would interpret it, and that that's the only way to interpret it, then I'm comfortable with the language. Is that accurate?
And I am, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And very willing to go on the record for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment that I think the amendment actually is less clear than the proposed definition of contiguous forests, and that the way it's written actually overall lends itself to the possibility of being interpreted as broader than the plain language written in the bill currently as amended. And since all permitting and planning processes must have some sort of end, saying that this, after this process, all applications filed pursuant to this Article or Article 18 associated with this special exception, I think would cause problems down the road, and is actually worse than what's in the bill.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we all agree that this doesn't change anything in terms of what the council intended, can anyone tell me why we wouldn't put this into the bill?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I don't agree with that statement.
Okay, that's fair. I mean, what I heard from Mr. Kaiszigler and Ms. Bray and others is that this does do what we kind of talked about. I guess where I'm struggling is, one of the things that Councilwoman Hare had asked was, we all agree, this is the natural reading, this is really the only way to read this to make sense of it. And my problem with that is that this exact question was asked to our county attorney, who we don't have here today to ask, as sort of a follow-up, but it was asked to him, and he took the opposite read of it. So that becomes a problem for me, because at that point, it does necessitate that we put some sort of clarifier in there to say what we mean. So if someone has another amendment that they think is clearer and will better express the intent of the council, let's do that. But absent that, I've put together what I think is the clearest way to explain this to make sure there's no ambiguity. So I'd ask for your vote on it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Administration, anything to add?
Reiterate our urge to reject the amendment.
Councilwoman Hare?
I'm just, sorry, I just wanted to ask one. Where, so does the administration agree with Mr. Kaiszigler? I mean, is he speaking? This is how it's going to be applied?
Down in ten.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 41.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative, Amendment Number 41 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 42.
Amendment Number 42. This amendment prohibits the application of the new requirements contained in Bill 6819 to any revisions to a special exception submitted prior to December 15, 2019, that do not materially alter the proposed or actual limits of disturbance.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Same explanation as before.
Administration?
Generally, same position as before, I think, but our planning and zoning officer can elaborate if needed. Thank you. We urge you to reject it.
I'm not sure we really need to offer any more. I mean, at the end of the day, we're grandfathering in special exceptions coming in before December 15. If we have a new special exception sometime after that, or a revision, that's a new public hearing, that's a new application, I think it would have to be looked at differently.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you. So I just, I wanted, do you want to ask one clarifying question on this? So if a special exception comes in before December 15, and let's say a sketch plan comes in January 1, and it slightly, but maybe we'll say not materially, changes the limits of disturbance, under this grandfathering clause, that is still subject to the grandfathering, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you're reading that provision? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Administration? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 42.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative, Amendment Number 42 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 43.
Amendment Number 43. This amendment grandfather certain revisions to plans and permits that do not materially alter the limits of disturbance to increase forest clearing.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what this simply clarifies is, on page 426, that revisions to plans are grandfathered that do not materially alter the proposed or actual limits of disturbance that increase the forest clearing. Now, if you were to decrease, then that would be different. The reason that this came about is, the term "materially alter," there is significant case law on that that suggests it could go either way, that it could be an increase or a decrease, that it's not necessarily only if you're increasing. So this sort of puts a backstop on it to say, you're not going to go any higher. So I think this actually helps the bill.
Administration, comments on Amendment Number 43?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I don't, we believe this is unnecessary. We only recently got to review this one, so I don't, I don't know how much more I can add, but I'll turn it over to anybody who wants to elaborate.
And I don't think on our, excuse me, on our end that we have much to offer here.
Any further discussion by the council? Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize if you have a question, because it came to light to me that sometimes, through the process, someone may actually be making their proposed development more efficient, or they're going to cut down quite a bit fewer trees, and they shrink the limits of disturbance significantly. By my understanding, if they were to do that, which is a good thing, right, we want them to shrink the limits of disturbance and cut down fewer trees, but if they shrink it materially, it takes them out of the grandfathering language, based on what I'm hearing Mr. Volkey say.
I don't think I agree with that. Why would that take them out of the grandfathering?
Well, because the grandfathering says that only a subsequent plan that doesn't materially alter the proposed. It doesn't say increase versus decrease. Theoretically, you could materially alter by decreasing. So if you materially alter by decreasing, it takes you out of the grandfathering language. I don't think that that was ever intended, but I do think in this one, the plain language suggests that if you decreased a whole lot, you're going to end up with an unintended consequence.
One thing to remember is, this bill is all about, from the state side, disturbance is disturbance, not just disturbance of forests. So this bill is triggered with 40,000 square feet or greater site-size disturbance. So we don't want to redefine disturbance in this portion of the bill and confuse things further in that way. There's plenty of other portions of this bill that refer specifically to the amount of forests that can be disturbed, and things like that. So I would urge us not to redefine disturbance here.
I don't think we're redefining disturbance, but anytime you do a site plan for anything, you have a limit of disturbance. It's going to cover any roads you've got inside, any, you know, buildings you're putting in, a material lay-down area, a site equipment staging area, things like that. Those, I mean, you can move things around within there if you change the design, but if you go and you say, "You know what? I'm going to be super responsible, and instead of building eight homes here, I'm only going to build five," and you actually shrink the limits of disturbance a whole lot, in my mind, that's a material alteration of the limits of disturbance. And if you do that, and you're actually being more environmentally friendly, it somehow kicks you out of this grandfathering clause, which I don't think we want to do. Am I misunderstanding?
I agree, and I'm going to say, a general best practice in planning is that these types of development applications that we have, wherever you're at, can be very, very complicated. Lots of judgment, lots of interpretations are made. But as a general rule or practice, when the developer, the applicant, is making their project better by reducing clearing, reducing disturbance, we work very hard not to hold that against them from a process or procedural standpoint, because we're benefiting, they're benefiting, the community benefits as a result of that. So I'm not sure if this is going to satisfy you, but there, I don't, from our standpoint, there would not be any intent, if someone made their project better, to put them back through every hoop and then un-grandfather them. That wouldn't make any sense.
Okay, I appreciate those comments.
And I would just echo that, again, Kenley Bray, Office of Law, that when we read "do not materially alter," the question in my mind is, "Material to what?" We're talking about forest conservation requirements here, and again, going back to the concept of disturbance. So if you are reducing the amount of disturbance through a revision, that is not necessarily a material alteration in the context of forest conservation and land disturbance.
No, but it says materially alter the limits of disturbance, meaning, I mean, the LOD for a whole project, correct?
It could be the limits of disturbance for the whole project, but in the hypothetical scenario that you just posited, which is a significant reduction in a land, in a project that is not changing in other respects. You're just still talking about a residential project, for example, you're still talking about the same kind of improvements, just on a smaller scale or with a smaller limit of disturbance. That is, that is not a material alteration in this, from the view of a land disturbance or clearing activity. So again, the context of this particular language is the forest conservation provisions, and I think a material alteration in that context would be something, obviously, that increases.
Only an increase, okay. Does the Office of Planning and Zoning ever require a change in the limits of disturbance after, say, a sketch plan's been approved? Like, let's say you've submitted your sketch plan or your...
Yes.
Preliminary, okay. And sometimes you compel a limit of disturbance change?
We have, on occasion, done that, yes.
Okay.
On more than a few occasions. And part of it is when we have a development application that might come in with six environmental modifications. And our options in dealing with that is looking at the justifications the applicant has, but we are certainly going to suggest, recommend, compel the applicant to disturb those environmental features none at all, or reduce that. So when the applicant's, I'm going to say cooperative in helping make a better project, the last thing we want to do is make it more difficult for them to proceed. There's no value in that for anybody.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Councilwoman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, there is no value to make it harder. One of the things that you said, Mr. Kaiszigler, is that this requires lots of judgments and lots of interpretation, and frankly, that's what I'm trying to avoid, with no aspersions to you. But again, as I said earlier, the less discretion and the more black and white law that we can have, where people can read the words on the page and know what it means, the better. That avoids us from being in situations where we lose good projects, like what we just did in Annapolis with the Wegmans. Frankly, I think that that is what we need to be looking at and trying to get to, as a place where people can read the law and know the law, and know, "These are my rights, this is what I can do with property, this is what's fair, I'm allowed to go and build this type of thing, and at the end of the day, it's the same for everybody." And we, as a legislative body, we're all elected, every one of us is up here getting paid to make these rules, and so frankly, when we abdicate that responsibility, it's dereliction of duty, and it's frustrating, but I guess that's where we're at. So again, I would ask my colleagues to please consider this strongly, to clarify this bill, but that's all I have to say.
Just a quick follow-up, Mr. Kaiszigler. You certainly are on the record this evening with the intent, but let me be absolutely clear, I'm sure there are applicants that have already reached out to you, and I'm assuming you're giving them the same message, correct? That you're telling us this evening, this is not something that, you know, the administration, "You need to say this," you're giving the intent of what was stated. Am I correct?
Actually, applicants have not been reaching out to me.
Okay, I didn't know. I'm just asking.
I think more often than not, they're going directly to the council members.
Okay.
Yeah.
Administration? Has anybody reached out to you and asked for?
I can't, I mean, they haven't necessarily reached out to the county exec's office, and if they're not reaching out to-
Okay. Just figured I'd ask.
I appreciate the question.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 43.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Just one second, and I want to say I appreciate Mr. Kai Ziegler's comments, and I'm going to hold you to these, but I do think in this particular instance, given the plain language of the bill, we do need this particular amendment. Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number 43 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, since there are no further amendments, could you please call the roll on amendment to bill number 6819 as amended?
Ms. Lacy?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Volkey.
Will we let, have any further discussion before we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, absolutely.
Unless I, I can explain my vote if you want it that way.
No, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely.
So I just want to put a couple of things on the record before we vote. For me personally, we were presented with some data from the administration when this bill began. It suggested that the county had lost somewhere between 2,400 and 2,700 acres of forest over the last approximately eight years. Throughout the process, as the council delved into the details and the statistics to a greater number, we learned that that actually looked like it might have been more like 1,640 acres. That's a difference of about 100 acres a year that we were losing. That was based on data that was reported to DNR. So that was sort of how we started this. There was a, I don't want to call it a false premise, but there was a suggestion that there was a lot more acreage that was being cleared than what we, as a county body and a county entity, had been reporting to the state on a consistent basis, which begs the question, were we misrepresenting to the state? Did we falsify reports to the state as the county? That raises a big problem. Or do we stand behind our reports, in which case, if we do, then at that point, why was the data so disparate? Why was it different? Over time, as we've sort of dug through the parts of this bill and tried to reach a compromise, we have ultimately been looking at what does Anarundale County need to look like in the future going forward, and how do we compare to neighboring jurisdictions? And I just want to put very clearly that, based on the DNR data that I was just referencing, that shows that we've lost about 1,640 acres. In the same time period, Prince George's County's lost over 3,000, about 3,102 acres. Baltimore County, 653. Calvert County, 816. Howard County, 233. But our neighbors in Baltimore, Calvert, Howard, and Prince George's were nearly three times as much as, as we were. They were at about 4,800. We were at about 1,600. So one of the things that was originally noted was that forest loss in Anarundale County was far exceeding that in the state, that no one was anywhere close to us, and that's been proven demonstrably false. In fact, what we have learned, and this council has learned in the process of our work and digging into things that were told to us by the administration in the beginning, is that, yes, Anarundale County has lost a lot of forest, and yes, we do need to do some things to prevent continued loss, but in the scope of where we rest in the, in the state and in our neighboring jurisdictions, we are nowhere near where we were led to believe. I also think it's interesting, and I want to point out for development purposes in this county, that we are actually at sort of a low mark, if you will, in terms of where development is for building permits for single-family and multifamily homes, if you trace that back to 1990. We're not, obviously, at the lowest point. The lowest point was during the Great Recession and what we experienced in 2008 and 2009, but we are certainly below, more or less, the average, with a trend line that continues to look like this. It's going down. So while I agree that we have issues, and while I agree that we need to address them with this bill, I just want to be clear that the data that the council has relied upon, the things we've done, there have been a number of people who have accused us of weakening this bill. There have been many people who are now up here today telling us, thank you for your hard work, we really appreciate all that you did, who, I recall, not that long ago, were up here telling us how we were destroying this bill and how we were taking it apart, and we were crushing all of the things that the administration was trying to gain. And frankly, I think that what this body has done is tried to balance and go down a fine line, weigh everything, look at the real statistics, not the one-sided statistics, but the real statistics. One of the things that I found most impactful to me early on was some testimony that was offered by a gentleman, Mr. McDonough. I remember when he came in, he is, he's an environmental scientist, and he does reforestation efforts, and he indicated how the fees that were originally being proposed by the administration were so high that they were punitive. So again, the council looked at that, took into consideration real-world professionals and what they had to say, and we adjusted the fees. We did the same for the thresholds. So I certainly am cognizant of some of the arguments on the other side that were made. I know Mr. Eilif made, at certain points in his testimony, some arguments about opposition to a Senate bill from 1991, and I found that relatively persuasive. I thought it was interesting, because it was the Maryland Builders Association talking about their opposition to the original forest conservation bill. And one of the things they noted in there is that it was going to entirely shut down the development industry, and I would go so far as to say, obviously, that didn't happen. But it did create changes. This bill is going to create changes, but I think that this council has worked very, very hard to try to recognize both parts of the argument, both the side of, we need continued growth, because that helps the bottom line, it helps to keep a thriving, growing economy, but on the other side, we have to protect our forest. But what we've done, again, is dug into this in a very, very deep way to get the data, to get the statistics, to look at the history, to understand the history, and then to craft something that we all can be proud of. I'm hopeful that similar to what the county executive talked about back in June, when he indicated that he wants to make Anarundale County a more affordable place to call home, it was a Capitol article, "County Tackling Housing Inequality," that we are getting there. And I'm hopeful that this bill will do that in some ways, by virtue of the work that's been done by this council. So despite the fact that I'm disappointed that certain amendments proposed tonight were not passed, I do want to applaud all of my colleagues for the time and the effort that was put into this, because I think that this is a tremendous example of working together and digging in and doing the work. This is what you all elected us to do. So I would just say thank you to all of you. I've appreciated the, the work, and I think that this really is a product we can be proud of.
Councilwoman Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a couple seconds, maybe, to talk about crafting good public policy, and it does take, it takes the ability to view legislation, each piece, through multiple lenses, and that's what this council has done with some very intense work to get this bill to this point. I wanted to take a minute to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Fiedler. We work together extremely well and extremely hard in a bipartisan manner, and I'm really proud of the work that we've done together in order to get this bill to the place that it is. And we are strengthening our forest conservation law. We will be the only county in this state to have touched the conservation thresholds. And with the combination of other aspects of this bill, I feel really confident that we are being good stewards of our environment while also giving a nod to some of our other competing needs in this county, like affordable housing, like growth, like revitalization. So, but it is important that the public know that crafting public policy does not happen via soundbite or social media post, and it takes a lot of work, and I'm very proud of the work that this council has done. So I hope, I hope this is a 7-0 vote tonight. I'll be really excited to see that.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually just wanted to say thank you, in particular to Councilwoman Pickard and Councilwoman Fiedler, for sort of the, the massive weight that they carried throughout this whole process. We heard a number of people testify at the first meeting in September, I believe it was, about sort of, please work together on the council, please make sure that you're cooperating and collaborating, and I would say that this, the work that happened on this bill was an amazing example of that, with maybe only one exception. I think any amendment that was passed was passed with at least five votes, which is pretty staggering. So I just think it's, it's pretty great that everybody worked so much together. I am, I am happy to put my support behind this bill.
Councilwoman Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To echo the sentiments of my colleagues, there were, at minimum, 100, 200 hours put into this bill, if not more. It was a bipartisan effort. In the very beginning, I made several requests for a work group and to hold the bill. We did not do that. I think that we, as a council, did a very good job of bringing the stakeholders together on our own and going back and forth with the various rounds of amendments. And I want to reiterate that this is not a anti-developer bill that is focused on developers. There are some real consequences to landowners, to folks who have forest conservation easements in their backyard and they don't even know it, to folks who have Christmas trees in their backyard and who have spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to salvage it. There are real people behind this bill who will be impacted, and that's what we have to take into consideration. It's very easy to do a surface-level view of any bill that comes before us. It's very easy to be swayed by the impassioned emails that we get, but our job is to do the hard work and dig deep and apply this. As Mr. Kai Ziegler said, we still do not know, when this is implemented, what it's going to look like on the ground, and we have to take that into consideration, too. I think we've gotten this into very good shape. I will be supporting this bill tonight, and I'm proud that we are a leader in forest conservation, and we can say that after this evening.
Councilwoman Rodvian?
I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for working very hard on this bill as well. With respect to the data and how much forest loss has taken place in Anarundale County, from my perspective, that's almost a moot point. The fact is, we are on a net downward slide. How steep that slide is, you know, we can look at different sets of data and come to different conclusions and determine that this data was drawn because it was measured in manner X, and this data concluded this because it was drawn, it used method Y. But I think the bottom line is, we all know that the forest, the amount of forest in Anarundale County is in decline. And while I, I think I've expressed throughout this process that I really would like a stronger bill, I'm very pleased that we are getting a bill that takes steps forward. I think we have to remember that, you know, despite all of our challenges, there is one overarching challenge that faces not only our county, our state, our country, the entire world, and that's climate change. And one of the best, one of the best ways to tackle climate change is by preserving trees and planting trees. And so everything that we can do in our county, regardless of how much or little our neighboring counties are doing, to preserve the trees that we have and to add additional forest, I think are really important steps. I think this concept, this idea that affordable housing and conserving forests are mutually exclusive goals is a red herring. I believe that they absolutely can coexist. It's just, they need to coexist. We need a different path. We've developed a path that is basically one that we've used since the 1950s, when we've gotten very comfortable with automobiles and sprawl and allowing development to spread to very far reaches, and we need to move away from that. And I look forward to having conversations about transportation with this council and with our county executive in the future, that we are looking at transportation in ways that doesn't necessarily require everyone to have an automobile, that can get some of our greenhouse gases addressed that way. But trees and using trees to address climate change, the health of the bay, to prevent the damage of harmful stormwater runoff, these are all the solutions that we know. And every step that we take forward, you know, in, in, in using these tools, I think is a valuable and important step, not just for the, for the future, who will be, you know, dealing with much more dramatic impacts of climate change than we are right now in 2019. We can still tell, even if our county makes positive steps, it's not happening in a consistent manner around the world. And so the next generation, these young people out here, this is an issue that you are going to be facing, and I think it's up to us to do as much as we possibly can to take the burden off of you and be responsible for the things that we can control now. Quality of life, habitat preservation, we, we still don't even have a complete understanding of how animal habitats and the general ecosystem and the level of life can fully impact all of our lives, and until we have a deep understanding and a thorough understanding, which I believe we will never have, because there's always more to learn, we need to be protecting of those that cannot protect themselves, and those, that, meaning animal species, forest species of all kinds. I'll just conclude by saying, I believe that we are taking a step in the right direction. We are taking the first step on building a new path, one that doesn't rely on sprawl, one that doesn't rely on automobile transportation to get everywhere, and I hope that, you know, we can build this collective vision to take additional steps down that path, and I will be supporting this bill.
Ms. Pickard, did you have anything here?
Yeah. So I'm going to, I'm going to wrap up here. I think what people often forget with these large bills that bring in a lot of public discussion, there's staff that have worked countless hours, certainly the county attorney's office, Ms. Schuet, our council attorney, all the staff, the executive branch, our staff who handle the phone calls, you know, the folks behind the scenes, I think we need to recognize them. But more importantly, I think this bill drew a lot of the public's attention with emails and phone calls, and I think there was a lot of engagement. And I know that's a burden, I'm going to be honest with you, on council members, especially those that don't have the staff, but for those that, you know, certainly take those calls and respond to every email and call, it's civic engagement. And I think that the more of it that we have, especially, you know, we mentioned the scouts here earlier, the more you are involved in, with a piece of legislation with, you know, stakeholders from whatever end, it all helps us. So I think overall, everybody was kind of saying those things, and we clarified some things this evening, but thank everybody for going forward. This is not the end. I'm certainly looking forward to some redevelopment legislation that we've talked with the administration to, you know, look at the other end of the pendulum. What are we doing to help development in the right areas, especially redevelopment on brownfields, public transportation, transit-oriented development? We need to make sure that those folks are also considered as we move forward, because you want to make sure that development's in the right area, so. All right, that's enough. Any further discussion? Let's call the roll. Madam Secretary, hopefully on 6819 for the last time. Thank you.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 6819 is passed.
Thank you. Thank you all. We do have other legislation this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number 3619.
Resolution number 3619, resolution proposing an amendment to the charter of Anarundale County. Mr. Chairman, can I wait till the-
Yeah. I'm going to give it a couple of seconds here, for those watching on TV. If everyone would, please, if you're going to exit or keep your conversations down, we still have legislation. Again, this is resolution number 3619. Mr. Barron, did you want to make a statement?
I haven't, I haven't read it in yet, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, please read it.
I was trying to wait for things to quieten.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit better now. Go ahead, Madam Secretary.
Resolution number 3619, resolution proposing an amendment to the charter of Anarundale County to allow the county auditor to have access to all records and files pertaining to county business, including records and files that contain information subject to disclosure protections under the law, to require the county auditor to keep protected information confidential, to allow the county auditor to conduct additional financial and performance audits of any office, department, or agency funded in whole or in part by county funds, and to allow the county auditor to conduct investigations of an act or allegation of fraud, waste, or abuse in the obligation expenditure, receipt, or use of county resources.
Thank you. Before we go forward, we do have Ann Colt-Litis, want to recognize you, State's Attorney. Thank you for coming, and obviously, I'm sure Mr. Barron will introduce Ms. Kenny, but Mr. Barron, if you want to add anything about this?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration, joining me at the table is our State's Attorney, Ms. Ann Colt-Litis, and from Office of Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. Resolution 3619 is the result of a lot of work, and frankly, a lot of politicking over the years. The previous administration had taken steps to demonize the auditor and ended up in some fights that, in fact, the county executive campaigned specifically against. He actually came down to the, to these chambers and testified in favor of two very similar resolutions during the election, in, during the election campaign in 2018. In fact, I have his testimony here. I won't read it, but there are some good highlights, including, you know, urging members of the body at that time to hold him accountable, and it's a firm belief of the county executive that a strong auditor is good for the taxpayers and the residents of our county. After the county executive won the election, he met with Chase Cook from the Capitol at Rise Up Coffee. I was present for that meeting. It was very early in the morning for the day after the election, where he spoke about the importance of a strong auditor and transparency, and you can see that in articles in the, in the Capitol. He's continued his advocacy for this for a while. That said, and as we all know, details matter, so I do want to make sure that we mention all the work that has gone through to craft this in the right way, to make sure that the information that needs to be protected is protected, and it's, I'll ask the Office of Law to comment on some of that, and I also want to make sure that we are cognizant of the needs of our law enforcement officials to keep us safe. And so I want to turn it over now to Ms. Colt-Litis. I know you all received, I was CC'd on it as well, a letter from her office today. I just want to make sure that that becomes, that perspective becomes part of the record.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Pruski, the honorable, honorable members of this county council, and to- Good evening, Chairman Pruski, the honorable members of this county council, and to our county auditor, Ms. Smith. My name is Ann Colt-Litis, and I'm here on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office. Often, these matters come before the State's Attorney's Office when the police department asks for our opinion on disclosing certain records. And I am concerned, although I do support the access for the county auditor to have the ability to investigate fraud and things of that nature, that we will still have an issue if there are certain law enforcement investigations that are particularly sensitive, have confidential information, and are in the stages of being investigated and perhaps charged for crimes. And so, I said in my letter today that I think that we're going to have to look at some of those matters on a case-by-case basis, that just simply saying that all matters would be turned over to the county auditor is a little bit broad, but that there will be opportunities for us to cooperate with the county auditor when there may be a police investigation or a law enforcement investigation. I also am concerned that the broad nature of this resolution entails access to all agencies or departments or offices that are funded by the county in whole or in part. And as you all have known, and I've said it several times, is that the Office of the State's Attorney, while we are funded by the county funds, we maintain a separate and distinct control as a separate state entity. And so, this type of oversight does not really touch the State's Attorney's Office the way it may touch another department within the county agency. We stand ready to cooperate with the county auditor, but we see that there could be potential conflict where there would be a denial by the police department or the State's Attorney's Office advising the police department not to turn over certain sensitive law enforcement investigations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Ms. Kenny?
I mean, I believe there will be amendments offered at the appropriate time, maybe. Unless there's any questions, we're happy to.
Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith would like to speak.
Sure. First, I want to extend a thank you to Nathan Volkey for initiating this, the council for supporting this bill, council members, Lacy and Mr. Volkey for attending many meetings, and the administration for attending a lot of meetings to try to get the wording for this amendment correct. According to the Association of Local Government Auditors Model Legislation, for local government auditors, unrestricted access to local government employees, officials, records, vendor contracts, and reports is a key element to having an effective audit function. The auditor's office brings a public transparency, accountability, integrity to government resources and the use of those government resources. There are a number of cases related to employee frauds where we would need sensitive information as well as medical information if we're looking into payments for medical payments. The other thing I do want to state and give some assurances, government accounting, government auditing standards requires access to records, but also requires us to protect that information, and we take that very seriously. And it also states that improperly disclosing information subject to disclosure protections to third parties is not an acceptable practice. So, we do take a lot of time and effort to do that. One of the other things it does say is you have to evaluate the situation when investigating frauds, and to look, to make sure that you're not interfering with an act of criminal investigation. And that sometimes requires working with the law enforcement and the State's Attorney, and sometimes it requires backing off and holding off until they finish their investigation. So, we do have some amendments coming up to further clarify that. There are, there is a way in our law that if we do come to a disagreement as to what information should be open to the auditors, there is a way for us to subpoena it in a due process, to take it in front of a court, to look at a case-by-case situation. We usually try to avoid that and try to work with the administration, the State's Attorney, the law enforcement agencies, and any department, to be able to obtain the information that we need to perform our jobs and limit how much protected information we need to actually look at. So, again, I want to reiterate this, a lot of hours were spent trying to craft this in a reasonable manner.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we do have amendments. Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment number one?
Amendment number one, this amendment allows the county auditor to have access to all files related to county business and removes superfluous language regarding information protected by law.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this amendment is introduced by Councilman Volkey and Councilwoman Lacy. I'm not sure who would like to speak. Councilman Volkey?
Again, so as everyone has said, Mr. Barron said, Madam Auditor said, this has been a sort of a labor of love for months at this point, to get this resolution to a place where we can all sit and be satisfied with the wording. This particular amendment sort of narrows down, but also broadens the scope of what the auditor has in front of her. So, there was some language that was originally in this resolution, we've sort of narrowed that down to a tighter statement that doesn't have all of the extras to it. And we think that this gives enough discretion that the agencies concerned, particularly State's Attorney's Office and Police Department, that if they have records that they feel uncomfortable giving, or if the administration has records that they believe are privileged or otherwise not provitable, I should say, that they would not be covered. So, again, I would ask all my colleagues for all three of these, as we move through them, to support them, because they do then get this resolution to a place where everyone can be satisfied.
Councilwoman Lacy, you want to like to add anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Way back when this charter amendment was originally, or the resolution was originally introduced, and we were then going to be voting on it at the first meeting, it was obvious that the seven of us agreed with the overall concept of the bill, and I asked my colleagues to hold the vote on the bill, because something about the language, I didn't know at the time quite exactly how to phrase it, but I knew that something about it needed more work, and this was some kind of problem. So, this is, it's been a few holds and a lot longer than I thought, but I'm confident that the language that we've reached in this amendment and the following two do exactly what this council was intending to do, to clarify and strengthen our auditor's position to be able to carry out her duties. And I'm perfectly happy with the process that we all know is available to be gone through if there's a dispute. But we have no reason to think that these, that our auditor and our law enforcement agencies and our State's Attorney's Office won't work together to be able to find fraud and waste and abuse, and especially as to fraud, to ensure that appropriate prosecution steps are taken, which is consistently in the county's interest to do. So, with that, I ask my colleagues to also hopefully unanimously support these amendments.
Thank you. Madam Auditor?
I just wanted to say that county auditors does support this amendment. I think it's a great compromise. It provides us with the ability to request information needed, not only for, to also be able to put controls in place, to protect us from future frauds, and in the events that there is something that occurs that results in inadequate controls being in place. So, I support this.
Thank you. Administration, State's Attorney's Office, any addition?
Sure. Just for the record again, Pete Barron, the administration does not have any issue with this amendment. Appreciate all the work that went into it. I do want to put on the record, and perhaps I'll turn it over to Office of Law if I misstate this, but I think it's important for us to be clear, as Councilman Volkey stated, and I think Councilwoman Lacy stated, what you identified what was maybe incorrect with the original version of the amendment, is by actually removing some of this language, we are ensuring that superior privileges will prevail. So, as Councilman Volkey maintained, if there is information that is subject to a attorney-client privilege, for example, or another privilege, that privilege can be exercised, and if there is a dispute that has arisen, that is, we can go through the process that the Madam Auditor outlined. Am I okay on the law?
That's right. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Councilman Volkey?
Can you just say you support the amendment?
We're okay with the amendment.
Before we call the roll, the fact that Councilman Volkey and Councilwoman Lacy are on the same bill, like, thank you. I'm just going to say that's historic, and I think everyone should support it.
Three amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment number one?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment number one is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment deletes superfluous language regarding the duties of the county auditor.
A motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Volkey, Ms. Lacy, anything to add here?
I think we've covered most of it, so I'm not going to add anything other than ask for support.
Administration, State's Attorney, any?
Same as the previous one, I think, same comment as well, related to the confidential information.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number two.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment number two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment number three.
Amendment number three, this amendment clarifies that the county auditor may conduct financial or performance reviews of offices, departments, or agencies funded in any part by county funds.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Volkey or Councilwoman Lacy?
Same as before, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Councilwoman Lacy, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one, being the shortest of the amendments, might seem to be the simplest to understand, but this really is just, for anyone who hasn't worked with an auditor closely before, makes clear that the scope of the auditor's authority encompasses, based on the local government standards that I don't know the full name of, but I know you do, the ability to conduct reviews as well as audits. It's specifically mentioned in those standards, so it's laid out, and a review is of a lesser scope than a full audit, yet still performs a very significant and necessary function that's important for us as well, you know, to be able to have that oversight. So, I didn't think that this was actually necessary at first, when we first were seeing this resolution, but as I came to understand better the history of the conflict between the county executives, prior county executives, and prior auditors, and the lingering effects of these kinds of interpretations, which is like a classic inter-branch conflict, right, in government, where one wants to limit what the other can do, and the other wants to expand. In this case, I don't generally support adding a lot of words to expand on what circumstances are covered, but here, this will absolutely protect the auditor's, what should be unquestioned ability to conduct both audits and reviews, and put this issue to bed.
Thank you. Administration, State's Attorney?
For the record again, Pete Barron with the administration. As was mentioned, particularly in the previous administration, I think what everybody understood as a power of the auditor was called into question, and it's appropriate to add back that and make it clear.
Thank you. Madam Auditor, Madam Chairman?
I requested this language to make it clear, and I appreciate Sarah Lacy's explanation, and she did a great job.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey?
She nailed it. I just want to add that it's been a lot of administrations. I just want to clarify that, not just the last one, but there have been a lot, because I think as Councilwoman Lacy made clear, this is part of the inherent tension in government, and it's a good thing. This is something that the framers of the Constitution saw, sort of placing different amounts of power in different branches and making them fight over it. We're doing the same thing. So, I think this is fantastic. I think that this gets us exactly where we should be.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment number three.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment number three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, according to our rules, this is a resolution, even with amendments, so we can call it a roll. On 3619, as amended?
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Resolution number 3618 is adopted.
Thank you.
Nineteen, apologies.
Thank you. I want to thank Madam State's Attorney for coming out in law office, Mr. Barron, and the auditor, and all the people that worked on the bill. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 4419.
Resolution number 4419, resolution approving Move Anorondale County's Transportation Functional Master Plan.
Okay, Mr. Barron, I know there's some folks coming forward, if you want to share some highlights?
Sure, sure. For the administration, Pete Barron, joining me at the table is Mr. Ramon Robinson, our Director of Transportation, and Ms. Martha Arzu McIntosh, as well as Ms. Kelly Kenny from Office of Law. Resolution 4419 is the resolution approving the Move Anorondale Plan, the county's transportation master plan. As many of you are well aware from contacts from constituents or from your commute down here, recent surveys have highlighted traffic as the number-one issue our residents face. Our infrastructure improvements have not kept pace with growth and the development of our county. We have also not implemented important pieces of previous plans. Last year, the council passed Bill 7818, which added a multimodal transportation component to county subdivision and development policies and processes. The bill references a transportation master plan. Before you today is the drafted master plan, which we are calling Move Anorondale. It will become final upon adoption by this council. Move Anorondale is the result of an extensive public outreach campaign and the work done by the Office of Transportation. Over the course of the last two years, transportation has worked with stakeholders to develop a framework that will serve as a guide on how we should approach transportation planning in Anorondale County. The department hosted three listening sessions in the county, hosted eight open houses, at least one in each council-matic district. I know many of you attended those. They engaged with the GDP planning process, made several presentations to the Citizen Advisory Committee. Saw technical review and comments from representatives from across county and state government. Those include our Departments of Budget, Finance, Public Works, Planning and Zoning, but also the Baltimore Metro Council, the City of Annapolis, their planning and transportation departments, Howard County's Office of Transportation, Prince George's County Planning Department, Maryland Department of Planning, Maryland Transportation Authority, Maryland Department of Transportation, the State Highway Administration, the Transit Administration, the Port Administration, the MDOT's Secretary's Office, the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, the Regional Transportation Authority of Central Maryland, and I'm sure we've left a number off. I'm going to turn over now to Mr. Robinson and his team to just go through the highlights of what's in the plan, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Robinson.
You're good.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of council. So, as I'm pretty sure you're exhaustive of me going through the details of this plan, This is the county's playbook to move Anarundel County into the best place by way of having multimodal transportation benefactors that will be gratefully beneficial to the citizens of Anarundel County. I don't know if there's any specific questions that you guys may have, but I kinda want to just leave this open for any questions that you may have, being as though you are probably resident experts on a lot of what has happened with Move Anarundel.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think any of us are nearly as expert as you. So we talked about this at the work session. I just wanted to follow up, make a point, and then I did have a question, but one point that I think is really good is, one of the things you've done with this plan is created objective metrics to look at congestion problems in this county, and where we need to be investing resources. So one of the best things that I think about this plan is that you have, through a non-political sort of clear view, come down and said, these are the priority places where we should be investing. And I think that's good for us as a council when we adopt this plan, because then it's gonna help us when we come into the capital improvement program, to be able to say, this is where we need to be spending capital dollars. So I think that by doing this plan, you have done a very nice job of identifying, not in a political way, not in a partisan way, but in a county-focused way, here's where resources should be spent. So I give you a lot of credit for that, and I think that's great. I think that's one of the most important pieces of this plan for us as a body, is that when we look at it, it can be a guiding document to how we're then going to spend the taxpayers' money. The next thing, I did have a question for you, having reviewed this and looked at it. One of the things you talk about is support for a complete streets policy. Now, Smart Growth America indicates that a complete street, you know, there's no singular design, each is unique, responds to community context, it could have sidewalks or paved shoulders, it could have special bike lanes, comfortable, accessible public transit, things like that. I guess what my question would be is, considering that there is such a uniqueness factor to it, what are you envisioning for Anarundel County when you talk about complete streets? What does that mean for us here?
Ramon Robinson, so for answering the question, Councilman Volkey, back in 2014, I believe, there was a complete streets guidance resolution, I believe it's Resolution Number Forty-five fourteen?
Okay.
That was already passed through Anarundel County Council.
Okay.
So the goal is to kinda move a step forward, to kinda have it to be more so, these are the things that we're implementing as it relates to improvements to pedestrian, bicycle, transit, and even vehicular approaches to how we actually design our infrastructure. So it's really more about having the design characteristics and practicalities about how we do things, and it's not a one-size-fits-all, but there are some simple things that we can do, like making sure that there's the adequacy of the right amount of width for bicycle facilities or pedestrian facilities, all the while they're meeting the Americans with Disabilities Act, the law.
Yeah.
So then the other thing, too, that goes along with that, is, you know, just the overall setup of how we actually design. I think the last time that I was here, I talked about managing the curb, and so it's really just those details about really getting more granular about managing the curb and how we're providing these alternative improvements for mobility.
Yeah. And I think that's tremendous. I think that's exactly the answer I was looking for, so thank you. One of the things I did just wanna hit on, too, is, I noticed there's a lot about walkability with sidewalks around schools. If you can just talk to that a little bit, it's not really a question, but I just think it's a key part of this plan. I know that there's a lot of press for bike lanes, and I think that's important, and we're going there, but I think another thing that really alleviates congestion is the more, you know, sidewalks that you can get in some of these walkable communities to and from schools, and I notice you've got that clustered in different areas of the county where you see different schools that are ripe for that, so if you can talk about that.
Absolutely. So one of the things that we looked into, in addition to kinda what's associated with the pedestrian and bicycle master plan, is we went a step further, and we looked at schools, particularly seventeen elementary schools.
Yeah.
Because our thought is, if your community is walkable, then that means that, you know, the school, or the access to the school, if that's walkable, then the rest of the community should be walkable as well. So, in looking at that, you know, we want to make sure that, right now, you know, when we look at schools, and I'm sure you'll hear from our friends with the school board, you know, there's the busing aspect, and usually you're having to bus because there's not that walkable or walkability that's associated with it.
Network.
And not just the walkability, but the ability to have bicycle-friendly accessways to get to the school. So we kinda layered inside of what we already have as it relates to bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and interconnectivity, looking at these schools, because now we've kinda got a centerpiece that says, well, if we can make this area walkable, and then it attaches to the rest of the area, then now we've got a walkable community, and it kinda starts with the school kinda being the commonplace. And that was, really, for the most part, that's an attractor, that it's easier to use, because it is a school, and the goal is, you know, you wanna make it walkable and bikeable for students.
Well, and I think that's great. I think, if I remember from the budget, there are sort of two places in the county that we have sidewalk money. We have it in the capital improvement plan, but we also, in the schools, then, sort of line item, there's also another sidewalk piece to that, and I know that there's a little bit of money there, but I don't know that it's a lot of money. So maybe that's something we need to look at, based on this plan, in future budgets, how much we're allocating. Maybe we need to be putting more money into that to make sure that we're getting this going forward, so, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, let's open up the public hearing. Remarks, I'm sorry, it's Councilman Hare, my apologies.
This'll be quick, I think, because I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked you at the work session, just for the benefit of everyone who might be listening. I know that, obviously, traffic congestion and sort of moving people through the county is obviously a huge priority, as the title of the plan suggests, but there are some areas, in my district at least, where safety that might not necessarily be due to congestion or car crashes are an issue. Four fifty flooding comes to mind, although I recognize that that's a state road. My sort of broader question is, what sort of consideration did you all give in the plan for safety concerns that are other than car crashes, in terms of prioritizing dollars?
So, Councilwoman Hare, so we did, as I stated, we do have a whole section where we actually talk about safety, and that safety is not just predicated on pedestrian safety or the bicycle safety, but it also goes back to the vehicular safety. So when we start to talk about complete streets, and we start to talk about Vision Zero, those are actual applications and practicalities that we're looking at, because, again, it gets back to the design criteria, and are we designing so that we have these safe endeavors as it relates to our infrastructure? In addition to the fact, when we look at, you know, one of the goals is to make sure that we have infrastructure that is viable. So when you look at four fifty, even though that being a Maryland state road, you know, we've kind of identified that as an area that we need to have an improvement for, because there are the safety aspects that are associated with it, but it's also a corridor. So that then not just predicates itself to just being specifically for transportation, but are we actually designing or developing around four fifty in the correct way, so that we can make these type of improvements? And we can work with the state to get these improvements, too. I think one of the pictures that you see in the plan is actually a road that has, basically looks like a swimming pool, and that is essentially one of the areas in which we hope to be, that's the resiliency part of what the plan actually addresses.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Hare's point brought me to another one. I just wanted to check with you. So one of the things in the capital improvement plan was some county improvements, this past year's capital improvement plan, was some county improvements with county money to a state road in my district, particularly Mountain Road, one seventy-three, one seventy-seven, excuse me, one seventy-three sports, small one. And that money was sort of pushed off a year, but from looking at this plan, that's obviously one of the high-priority things that you all have identified, is that corridor, but also this idea of using county money on state roads sort of plays into this plan, too. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that from the plan, because I know that, in talking to some people, there's historically been some question about, should county money be used on state roads, or should we only use it on county roads, and, so if you can just talk to that for a moment?
So, absolutely, Councilman Volkey, sorry about that.
That number.
So, that is, so the way that, I think, the information that you're referring to is kind of how we looked at it, not so much as, you know, it's not priority-based, but it's needs-based. So everything that we're looking at is based on the needs-based aspects of what we need to do for Move Anarundel. So please take this into consideration. One of the most important parts of Move Anarundel is the performance measures that are associated with it. So when we're looking at the performance measures, and we're looking at the projects, and we're looking at how we're leveraging, because this is a twenty-year plan of the twenty-year horizon, we're trying to get to a certain place. So now, we're in a position where, instead of this being something that you're trying to figure out, we have a playbook that everybody uses, and so now we're trying to figure how to get to a certain place, because it's not the incremental, every-year capital projects that are gonna be where we're focusing. The focus is gonna be, after a twenty-year, thirty-year horizon, where are we? But of course, the annual is gonna be important.
Right.
But how do you go about doing that? So, we have projects that are on state roadways and state corridors. I mean, we have to be idealistic about the fact that thirteen of the major corridors in Anarundel County are all Maryland roadways, with one U.S. highway and a interstate, right? So, I mean, we cannot be advantageous about how we're gonna move Anarundel if we're not actually doing some type of work on these Maryland state roadways. So it takes that collaboration with the state in order to kinda have these things to move forward.
Mr. Robinson, thank you.
There, I'll just add, there is a transportation town hall tomorrow night that the county executive is hosting, that you all are all invited to, and would love to see everybody who's listening, or in the audience, or here, up on the desk.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'd like to open up the public hearing. Remarks are gonna be limited to two minutes for Resolution Forty-four nineteen. Does anybody like to come forward? I had nobody listed. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing, Resolution Number Forty-four nineteen, is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Forty-four nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-four nineteen. Resolution approving move Anarundel, Anarunda County's transportation functional master plan.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion or lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number Forty-four nineteen.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Forty-four is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Forty-five nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-five. Resolution concerning appointing a member to the Anarunda County Ethics Commission.
Okay. I see Ms. Schultz is coming forward.
For the record, Kaylee Schultz from the county executive's office, with me at the table is Christine Neder from the Office of Law. Resolution Forty-five nineteen appoints Elizabeth Lewis to the Ethics Commission. She is a Democrat, a resident of Edgewater, and is the Director of Accounting and Treasury Unit for the Aspen Institute, which is an educational and policy studies organization. She will be filling a vacant spot on the commission that was previously served by Thomas Mulroney, who is also a Democrat. If approved, Ms. Lewis will serve the remaining of a term that will end on April thirtieth of 2023. You should have her resume in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Seeing no initial discussion, let's open this up for public hearing. I have no one listed. Anyone like to come to speak on Forty-five nineteen? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing, Resolution Forty-five nineteen, is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title for Resolution Forty-five nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-five nineteen. Resolution concerning appointing a member to the Anarunda County Ethics Commission.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Forty-five nineteen.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Forty-five nineteen is adopted.
Thank you all. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Forty-six nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-six nineteen. Resolution supporting the Anarunda County Board of Education's fiscal year 2021 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program request for submission to the Interagency Committee on School Construction.
Okay. Mr. Barron, looks like Mr. Shaknovich, Mr. Beauchamp are here. I'll let you begin.
Happy to. For the record, Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me at the table is Mr. Shaknovich from the Public Schools and Mr. Beauchamp from Budget. We discussed Resolution Forty-six nineteen at the work session. As you all will recall, this resolution supports the letter that the county executive, it confirms the support for the letter of the county executive's fiscal year 2021 Capital Improvement Program request, which is submitted by the Anarundel County Board of Education to the Interagency Committee, the IAC, on school construction for funding under the state's Public School Construction Program. Procedures that are set forth by the IAC require a written letter of support from local government. In accordance with Section Ten fourteen of the county charter, such a requirement must be acted upon by the county executive, and then referred to the county council for confirmation. In your packet, you will see the county executive's letter. With that, we ask that you move the resolution, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Shaknovich, if he has anything to add, or, and we're happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Seeing no lights, let's actually hear from the public. We'll have a public hearing on Forty-six nineteen. Anyone like to come forward? Please do so at this point. Seeing no movement in the crowd, public hearing on Resolution Number Forty-six nineteen is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Forty-six nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-six nineteen. Resolution supporting the Anarunda County Board of Education's fiscal year 2021 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program request for submission to the Interagency Committee on School Construction.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number Forty-six nineteen.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number Forty-six nineteen is adopted.
Thank you all. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number Forty-eight nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-eight nineteen. Resolution encouraging the establishment of a tree planting incentive program in Anarundel County.
Thank you. This is Councilwoman Hare, Councilman Volkey, and Ms. Fiedler. Not sure who's speaking.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hare.
Okay. So, since we're talking lots about trees tonight, y'all remember, a few meetings ago, it came out that the fee-in-lu money that we currently collect is largely used to purchase conservation easements, which I think is a very good thing. However, it also came out that we don't actually use that fee-in-lu money currently to replant trees, in part because it is very difficult for the county to find land to be able to purchase and plant the trees with. It's cost prohibitive. A woman came up to testify that night, I believe she was from Glen Burnie, and she said, "Give me a tree, I'll plant it." And it really stuck with me, that sort of, like, mindset, and I thought, gosh, that seems like such an easy solution. So we've done a little background research, and thank you to Ms. Schuet for really giving a big assist in this. There are a couple of counties, in fact, neighboring counties, that currently have tree incentive programs, whereby the counties use some of their fee-in-lu money to purchase these trees, and a couple of times a year have a program where individual homeowners can accept a tree for their front yard, their backyard, where have you. And the program, to my understanding, is very successful. I'm certainly not suggesting that this should replace purchasing conservation easements, because obviously there is huge value to purchasing the large contiguous forests and the benefits that they offer. But certainly, if one of our concerns is that we are losing a specific number of trees, having individual homeowners willing to replant the trees can assist in lowering that number, particularly because it means the county's not paying for the land, so it's a huge cost that comes off of the county. It would leave certainly the details up to the administration as to how they might choose to implement such a program, but I think that, given that we just had a unanimous passing of the Forest Conservation Bill, this would be a great statement that we are also putting in a tool to capture and incentivize sort of individual trees getting replanted all over the county. Thank you.
Administration?
Thank you. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me again, and I apologize for missing you at the last resolution, Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We agree, this is a great statement. We did just pass a very meaningful bill that will do a lot to protect our environment in this, in this county. And I think you pointed it out, Councilwoman Hare, there is a difference between planting a tree and forests, and there are some real benefits with forests, so I believe it's state policy. It is also this administration's policy to prioritize replanting or protecting forests. It's much easier to protect a fifty-year-old tree than wait fifty years for a sapling you plant. That said, we have no opposition to exploring a program such as this, whether we are using fee and lieu dollars or partnering with the number of the nonprofits that do work like this. Be happy to explore how to make this work.
Thank you. I do have a question for the sponsors, if they know. This was many years ago, when I was an HOA president, and I'm not going to tell you my age, but when I was doing that, the MDE had a program where HOAs were reached out to, and they were handing out free trees at a certain time, and it was on private property. I don't know, does that program still exist? Does anybody know, by any chance?
Mr. Chairman, I, too, have heard about the program, and I have not been able to find a definitive answer if it still exists or not.
I'm going to have to go back in the archive emails about twenty years ago, but I think we did get emails about that, that was through MDE, where they encouraged on private property, and the state provided funding for it. I know, Madam Auditor, you may have.
So I can tell you that the state does have a program for tree planting. It actually has a couple different programs. I can't remember exactly the extent of those programs.
Okay.
But I do know they do have some.
Ms. Schuet, I think.
They have at least one program in which you can buy trees at a reduced cost from what you would pay otherwise, and then you plant it on private property.
Yeah, I'm going to support this resolution. The only reason why I ask is, if we're asking to do this, I think we should coordinate with them. I mean, if any ways, if we can get the trees at a cheaper cost, or whatever it is. Again, I don't know the program, because it's been twenty years since I've used it, but it's something to investigate as we move forward.
Yeah, and there's definitely some real value to making sure that we partner with experts on this. There's certain types of trees that people don't, that might look pretty, or might look nice, that people like Mr. Johnson have real issue with.
Great. Well, let's open this up for public hearing. I don't have anyone listed. Is there anyone like to come forward to speak on Resolution Forty-eight nineteen? Ms. Johnson, if there's anybody else in the crowd, please come forward at this time.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box sixty-six thirty-four, Annapolis, Maryland. Mr. Pruski, I believe that one of the programs that you're talking about is tree, tremendous, Maryland, and the politician who directed this was Wally Orlinsky, who did it for years. Part of the reason I know about that is my kids did some projects up at Sandy Point State Park, and they had bunches of trees, and unfortunately, the people who could have put them in the ground were not authorized to do so, and a whole lot of them died in the drought, the heat of the summer. I certainly support this idea. I think it's really important. I think that you will be able to find a lot of volunteers. I will tell you that in my experience, the BGNE people, forgive the term, but they just horn in on it, and by George, you aren't supposed to plant anything close, anywhere near their utility lines, because by George, they're going to come and cut them down, and if you object, well, you're just out of luck. And if they chop down your trees that they have absolutely no right to do, I'm working on two years now trying to get some trees replaced. They took down four trees, all the way down to the ground, that were absolutely no threat to the lines. They chopped down my azalea bushes. Do thirty-year-old azalea bushes ever grow up into the utility lines? No. It was awful. I mean, it's really grim. Anyway, I do think that you'll be able to find people, and you have the scouting organizations here. There are lots of people who, I believe, will be eager to assist in this kind of a program. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So I support the, is it resolution? The resolution.
Thank you. And it is tremendous. My colleague just confirmed that. I'm not sure, I didn't remember that from twenty years ago, but now we got it. The public hearing on Resolution Forty-eight nineteen is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Forty-eight nineteen.
Resolution Number Forty-eight nineteen, Resolution Encouraging the Establishment of a Tree Planting Incentive Program in Anaronda County.
Madam Secretary, could you add me as a cosponsor for this? It's a great idea.
Yes, sir.[1755.65]